Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our extended work session on August 2nd, 2021 at 5:30. Do you mean Citizens Council? You'll be also the acting clerk for this portion of the meeting, so we appreciate that. If you'd call in, please.
Absolutely. Councilman Cobb?
Here.
Councilman Robal?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook?
Here.
Mayor Lowery?
Here.
Councilman Griffin?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Aglesby? Councilwoman Noah Cowan?
Here.
We have seven members present.
Thank you very much, sir. And tonight's invocation will be done by Vice Mayor Cook.
You all, please bow your heads. Our Heavenly Father, please bless this group tonight as we attempt to do the business for the citizens of this grand city. Please protect all of our EMTs, our firefighters, our deputies, and those of our troops that are across the seas. Please also put our blessings upon those of us that are sick with this COVID-19 and see if we can do something in order to alleviate this new strain with that we pray. Amen.
The flag of allegiance is to the Father and the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, moving on. Action on regular minutes. We'll handle that in regular session. Communications known. City manager won't be handled in regular session. Comments from the members of the public? And then committee reports known. Resolutions and ordinances will be handled in regular session. Down to other business, legislation, discussion. Mr. Bridge?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the councilmen of the public. Just a quick little review of the legislation so we can have a little bit more time left for the Charter Review work session. So tonight we have Resolution 21-13R that was introduced on July 19th. That is a resolution that amends our capital improvement plan. I think this one has to deal with the software for the mayor's court and then also the wastewater repair for the United States Capitol. We also have Resolution 21-14R, that is introduction public in hearing and action tonight. And this is the first of many resolutions that we do to improve our streets by lighting. So we all know August is a susceptible month. We're here, and that's why we see the influx of ordinances on our agenda tonight. So we start off with the Resolution Council through Zach, then it goes to the subsequent ordinance. So the ordinance is up tonight is Ordinance 21-23D. That actually was on last week's agenda. We did not have enough members for the emergency, so I did put that back on as an emergency measure. And that is expenditure of over $20,000 to pay for our yearly audits. What's different this time around here is that we actually have a contract within for the next five. So instead of doing this every year, we just kind of do it in one slide and then we care for audits until 2023, I'm sorry. We also have Ordinance 21-24 tonight. That is an ordinance applying in magistrate for the mayor's court. And the subsequent one, 21-25, is an ordinance applying to clerk for the mayor's court. We have Ordinance 21-26. That is an ordinance replacing certain sections of Chapter 248 as the codified ordinance of the City of New Carlyle regarding city policies. And that is our piece of credit card policy to comply with House Bill 132. The remaining is just introduced tonight, and they all are assessment ordinance. We will vote on those at August 16th meeting. First one is 21-28. That is a kicking back off of the Resolution to declare the necessity of lighting them. This one determines that councils shall proceed with that street lighting. Then we have Ordinance 21-29, which levy assessments to light those streets. And then 21-30 is our ordinance for the liquid utility accounts. So someone does pay their water bill, we put them on a lien. And the remaining two, 31 and 32, those have to deal with the weeds that we had cut, grass, grass cutting, the basements we had done over the past year. And subsequently, the nuisance one would be if we went and cleaned up someone's house with trash, we didn't cut grass. So again, these are all yearly ordinances that we do. It does seem like a lot, but you know, they're much easier. Any questions on any legislation? I'd be happy to interject.
Council, any questions, comments, feedback? I'll leave a... I just have one. It's not, it's, I don't know, the mayor's court. We can be, I guess it's not tied to those exactly, but at what point where we need to get into discussion about what you're going to use for the city building as far as, and then use for the street?
I'm already working on that. That's part of the CFP remending because we have a little buffer in there for you to go ahead and get like the lons, miscellaneous.
Right.
So after this one, we have about maybe two or three more ordinances we need to do on the mayor's court. We're going to bring those to you on the August 16th meeting. We didn't want to, yeah, there's been a lot. Plus, we're still, we're pacing it out. But those should be the last round of ordinances that we need to make. We have defined schedule, et cetera, et cetera. We really wanted to wait for the clerk to call in so we can have him or her input on that fine schedule. She's the one who's going to be managing it. Of course, it'll all be approved by council, but we do want her feedback on it. If I, I don't want to get too ahead of myself, but I can say hopefully by October 1, mid-October, we can have her case before.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Very, it's been a learning experience with the mayor's court. It's been a lot of work, but the end result is going to be awesome.
Right. Gain some new knowledge, right?
We all have.
All right. Thank you, sir. And then dropping down to pending Charter Review Commission members. A work session, so this is, I guess, we're just kind of a formal talk. Mr. Hall, Mr. Griffin, do you have anything you want to start off with? We want to talk a little bit?
Yes. I know that there was some discussion during the last council meeting about potential procedure issues or lack thereof when we appointed us as a committee, whether or not we were following in line with the charter. So I think collectively, knowing, you know, that this is a legal, you know, binding document, we would like to make sure that we're following the charter that you guys are charging us to review. So I realize we only have three members of our original five applications that were initially approved. Ms. Pat Krabacher is currently out of the country, serving on a mission trip. And I believe Mr. Ian Meadows, he seems somewhat undecided now whether or not he would like to press forward, but I would leave that to him as to whatever his current status is for the charter. I understand that some other applications or an application potentially may have came in, so I don't know if we want to address that application. If you guys would like to interview us or ask us any questions. I know we kind of have some questions for you, but this is, I guess, the way I visualize this is an opportunity for us to kind of understand each other's intentions and, you know, whatever our goals are for this. And I'll leave it to you guys.
Ms. Wright, I thought that was the thing you were about to say. You were like, right, wanting to defend. I just, I knew you were back there.
She did it on purpose.
What's that?
I think she did it on purpose.
Yeah, we did get the application. We got it from Ms. Matlock. And that's awesome. I think it was your post. I was tired. Probably being here last time we tried to review that thing. She said she would not be able to make it tonight, though?
I didn't. She said she was going to contract at the 7 o'clock.
So what we have four, not including, you know, three, because we don't know about Mr. Matlock, he's in one side of the country. When is she due back?
She's due back late August. I believe she'll be back in three and a half weeks.
But she's still a member.
Right, right, right. But I knew it was a big...
She's not going to interview?
Yeah, she would still be interviewed still.
If she's not a member, so she's interviewing a point. So they still only have four.
So I don't know if there's anything contingent upon exactly what the interviews entail. I do know, I have been speaking with Ms. Krabacher since she has been in Africa. She's been very receptive to email. So I don't know if there's a series of questions, if this could even possibly work of, you know, if there was any questions that were asked to the body, you know, of the committee, that in all fairness, to give her an opportunity to answer those questions, if that would be possible, to then maybe come on the next council meeting in two weeks, to then vote us in again officially, giving time for the other application to come in. And then I believe there is another individual who is also eager to apply.
Like, could we legally?
I don't know, Charlie, but I mean, if you're going to be someone, they have to be physically present. I can ask Jake, but...
I would ask Jake, but asking if it could be done by Zoom.
You guys aren't allowed to do it.
I thought we just...
Do you have to meet in person, but I would love to see if you can do it zoom or not?
But haven't we made some changes in things so that we can, if next week we needed to meet, and meet by Zoom, we could do it?
The State of Ohio ended all their online meeting requirements, et cetera.
July.
July 1. So every municipality has to go back to in-person?
Well, if we were, maybe ask them if we're in person, if we're in here, if we set her up on a video screen, something like that.
I mean, yeah, I can ask them, but I don't know if we have the equipment. We can't do lighting now.
We couldn't do it here.
We could do it here. We'd have to go to the fire station because we don't have the internet.
Would it be possible to, I know some of the things that, some of the questions that we have for you guys is on the comprehensive plan for the city. I do believe the ORC and I think I would need to talk with Jake, is we could serve as just a special advisory council and not then be contingent upon the charter. There's, there's only a few, a handful of committees that are even listed in the charter, but I believe you guys have the ability to determine people as like special advisors or, you know, subcommittees that are not mentioned in the charter. Would it...
I would just say find a fifth person.
Find the fifth?
That would go under your question. What I suggest is when Mrs. Matlock applies, we had a very quick subsequent application with the Department of Records, which is written in. I didn't realize this until about 2015. We're from the same address. But I think that they're clearly living together. If he's willing to go to the Charter Review Commission, close the Department of Records, that would give them a five if it started. Or go out and get another person. Because you can meet as a subcommittee. I don't know what happens to Jake on that because I don't remember anything in our charter about the creation of subcommittees. It's just really extension of council by a board. And you still have to go through some sort of venue, given it is a subcommittee.
Right.
But there's nothing in our charter about subcommittees. I don't know how to really work out.
Okay.
I would just play the role very, very, very abruptly and just get that as quickly as possible.
What was the other gentleman's name you mentioned?
Jason McPeak.
And he's interested in the charter too?
Yes. Yes, he is. He's currently out of town on business. Could be back on Wednesday, but he has the application. I believe his intent was to submit that application.
Okay. So potentially six.
More than married.
Yeah. Okay.
And I solicited a few people over the weekend, the members of the community. I do believe there's a young Hispanic woman who just graduated from college who's also interested in potentially serving. So I floated an application her way as well.
What about Tim?
Tim? His husband and wife, which is a good...
Yeah.
Well, y'all know I don't speak for my wife, but...
So we can ask her.
Okay. All right, council, do you guys have any feedback, comments, questions for these three on this topic? I mean, were you guys, any directions you want to see them look into or go or? I know I talked to Donnie just a little bit casually, a couple, you know, a little bit. The one biggest thing that I, you know, I would like to see change in the charter is our council members dropped. You know, Clark County can run the entire county with three commissioners and township can run with three township trustees. I don't see why a city our size needs seven council members. And that's, you know, it's not anything political because it would take place after I was gone, I think. So, but, you know, it would save, it would save a lot of time and headache for the administration side, I think. Not necessarily headache. We don't cause them headaches at all.
No, not at all. Loved every seven of you.
But it would save, I think it would just overall save, it'd make it less complex of what it needs, what it needs to be. You know, I think five is more than enough. I mean, you could probably even do it with three, but I think five would be the better number. Three, it could possibly cause problems, you know. So I think that's, you know, one thing that I would like to see.
Tough to get a form on three with somebody sick.
You know, the form of government we have, where it's a city manager, you know, strong, I don't think that gets changed. I don't, you know, me personally, I don't think there's too many changes. That's my big one, I think, that would help the city dramatically is dropping the council members down to five versus seven.
And I don't think we're big enough to have council members from specific precincts. I still think it will be at large. Although that has been brought up this morning.
I disagree with them, but...
With me or Dale?
Dale.
Oh, okay.
I, I think there's something to be said that have somebody that, my big thing in town here is community, and there is none.
I disagree.
Do you remember what it was like in the 60s?
No, I wasn't alive yet.
Okay.
I've seen pictures of.
I, in cleaning up during this whole pandemic thing, I ran across a booklet that was the program booklet from Sesquicentennial.
Yeah.
You know how many people were on committees? Not the people who were, 255.
Yeah.
Well, I also think back in the 60s, you had, it wasn't always, there was a lot more free time. You know, most, most households had one person working. Now it's two, multiple.
Sure, absolutely. The lifestyle has changed.
As a parent of three, it's hard for me to just cut out this time, more or less, being on the committee. I mean, from summertime and winter, you know, being on baseball and basketball, it's, you know, it's tough. I don't think we had, and we didn't have as, I mean, you know, I mean, this is, for example, when I played baseball, we had a month before we started football. Initially, we had six days. There was no time in between. So I think that takes a lot of parents, people who'd be on committees, that takes a lot of, a lot of attention from other lives to, you know.
I mean, we have serious communication problems in the city in terms of communicating with citizens. I mean, we have no local newspaper anymore. We, I don't know anybody who gets this very guilty.
No, no, that's not...
No, but...
Communication nowadays is done via social media.
Right there.
And this text message is unfortunate. You don't have to do as much face-to-face communication as you have in baskets, you know, technology technology, which isn't always good.
Well, right. And it pretty much excludes a large population.
I wouldn't say excludes. They choose to be exclusive. You choose not to be able to text them. This is what I tell my mother all the time. She chooses not to text me. You know, she knows how busy we are. Texting is the easiest thing to get a hold of. She chooses not to. Not that she can't. She chooses. That's the difference between...
But to find out what the city's doing, what are the sources of information? Facebook?
I've been into the city the last couple of weeks. Funny, the information I've got, even dad, you can see what's going on with the city. You just got to make, it's just not easy. You have to, or you have to pay by both parts.
Right.
And unfortunately, I think we've gotten to the point in society where people just want anything they want. This is what you want. Here, you know, you know, they don't want to put any of that into it. It's a two-way street. I can only go so far before they have to come to me. So...
If they, if they knew one particular person in the area that they lived in that they could go to, right now it's, well, who do I go to? I don't know any of them.
Well, I mean, no offense, I can get from one side of the city to the other in about seven minutes in a vehicle. I mean, it's not like we're Philadelphia or New York or, I mean, it's, and we're here every, every other Monday. And Randy's in the city building every, every day. And Mike, if you can't find Mike, it's, you know, you're not working hard enough. I mean, he's either on Plumwood or Lake and...
And all of our phone numbers are on the website and in the newsletter.
Yeah. I mean, you, there's, I mean, I agree with you. Times have changed. The people that aren't real busy, yeah, there's not that a drive to be involved in your community as much as it was, I agree, back in those days. But at the same time, there's also the group of people that, you know, the information's there. It's our available, I mean, we're here. You can't, like I said, you can't find any of us, then you're not putting the effort. We're out there. Everyone here is available.
And we put council meetings on YouTube. Do people want to sit? Casey, how many people watch our council meetings on YouTube?
I mean, I think once we get the internet fixed here and we can livestream, and hopefully we can accept messages via email during meetings, I think that'll, that'll go a long way. You know, people, you know, they don't want to get out of the comfort of their own home most of the time. They're creatures of habit. So...
If it would be possible to interject, I know we're not an established body yet, but this has been a lot of our discussions as well. Mrs. Wright, I don't want to steal her thunder, but I sent out an individual email to a few of the committee members over the weekend. And she had a fantastic idea of what I thought was fantastic, of possibly mailing out a survey to the community specifically regarding the charter, but essentially soliciting feedback. So whether this would be done via mail, I also think it would be an opportunity at Harvard Markets to set up a table. This could be accomplished through council or by an established committee. And also the Heritage Festival, when I spoke with Mr. Mayor Lowery, that is, that is, that is a time, at least for me and my family, of great pride in the city. And I don't, I represent a certain demographic of the dual income families raising four kids right now, who are just literally trying to survive every single day. And I know people have it much harder than I do. And I do think there's pride out there. I do think people care. But the demographics have changed drastically in just one generation. And now we're trying to recover. And now we're worried about what it's going to look like for our kids. Because if this is what community involvement looks like for, for my generation, then what's it going to look like for my kids? So I think the exploration phase, I do think the charter is, is, is a, it's the spine of the city. It's the soul of the city. It's our identity. It's our constitution. It's a very important document. And I, and it has to go on a ballot where people vote for it. And if they're not involved in this process, if they're unaware, then I think it, it could be a lot of work that we put in for no reason unless we have that community involvement. I like the ideas of the retreat in town halls, any sort of group discussions we can possibly have. But I'm very interested, if selected for this committee, to speak to many different people who represent this community and serve in this community. Because I believe the charter impacts a lot of different people's lives. So, you know, understanding our form of government, you know, is a major part of it. I talked with a few of you about my position on it. But I think also enforcement is going to be a major, major part of this review. And we're really going to have to kind of come to terms. But I, I think enforcement could be a potentially a large area of discussion where we would be soliciting feedback, you know, for as many people that we can, because we realize we have a lot of ordinances that we're not responsible for reviewing. However, enforcement section of the charter is going to directly impact the laws that you guys have already approved. So if we're not going to enforce those laws, then maybe we should reevaluate what enforcement looks like in New Carlyle. We don't have to be like everybody else. There's, there's some other ways and maybe we can solicit. I know Mr. Griffin has talked about possibly having guest speakers come in who have redeveloped cities similar to ours. And, you know, what they did when they, when they were in our stage right now. But that's, that's the big thing collectively, and I don't want to speak for the group, but, you know, we're very curious of what other people, we realize this is very important to be even considered to be selected for something like this. But we just want to make sure that we're representing everyone's best interest.
Well, I like that idea. Is our, our water bills, the way they go out, are we able to, if they were to come up with, say, a list of questions or, or, you know, whatever, some sort of questioning or whatever, whatever it may be that was to come up, can we put that in our water bills?
In the water bill?
Not in the water bill, but they're, because since it's in an envelope now, we can put an extra sheet.
Oh, we could do like a supplement, but that's not how you want to do something like that. You want to do something, I mean, you guys think, if you mail out paper stuff, surveys, one, your results, your response will also go down because now someone has to write on these papers and, you know, that. Your best bet is, you know, the front survey, the survey monkey, people can just access the websites or, you know...
And we could announce it in the, announce it in the water bill so that they know where to go. Just a thing that...
Yeah, I really would like the idea. I'm being very, very honest. No one reads that stuff. They're so used to seeing, they look at the bill, how much it is, and we can put maybe $1 million, everyone can, I think, for people. I'm not trying to be negative because we work with this all the time. Your best bet against most people is social media apps, Facebook, all kinds of stuff, Mike page, all areas people hate is, here is the link, do it, do it, they do it. It's all calculated, go back to the letter, emailize it, set it up. When we did all, I mean, when, you know, this review service, I mean, your results don't matter, especially if you do paper, you're...
So is this a, something that would be separate then through our website? It would be like a company that would put together?
You can have the survey monkey, it's just a third party administrator. It will house share a survey, or it will compute your data. It's up to you to put the link however you want. So we can have a link on the website, says Charter Review Survey, cut this, maybe on a Facebook page, like that, and then your Facebook page can just taste it to the survey monkey's site, where they, where they do it.
What kind of thoughts is involved?
Three.
Yeah, I was going to say, we just did one for the baseball.
Up to, that's not a question.
Yeah, yeah.
But you don't want it to be no more than five or six.
I think it's six. Because we just did one for the baseball association. Okay.
There's a lot of theories when you do these surveys, whether you know about, about how long you can keep someone to six minutes. When I started out surveying, I was doing my analysis and stuff, no more than maybe seven rushes.
Okay. I've never heard of that.
Survey Monkey? Oh, yes. Our, 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 our,
I think that's your point, is use all the channels of communication that you have. We have mail covered with water, so everyone that doesn't do, you know, um, social media, at least they got, got it from mail. If you guys mention it on, in your YouTube videos, Facebook shows, there, there are other places that, that we can use it. Just all channels of communication, but all that feedback goes into the form of a survey, which is pretty much. And you guys could approve the, uh, the questions, and then, and then we can see results together.
Right.
I mean, for, for me, it's the, the scope of work for this charter review, and I just, I just want to know what I volunteered for, you know? And, uh, so, um, that, and, um, I, I would want to have citizen input, you know, I think that's important. So, uh, as well as all the norm, but what, is there a reason that the charter was set up to be reviewed every so often? Yeah, because things change.
Times change.
What things, does council want to see change? What do your administrators want to see change? What does, might the public want to see change? I think that's what our charter is.
And that was a great point with the, the demographic point, too. I, I would like that incorporated to the study, too, identifying the type of household that's filling out the survey. And I think that's a collective intelligence that will help you in other areas that you guys are trying to work, like your, your comp plan and things like that, and understanding our demographics. And as, I would recommend making it as specific as people feel comfortable with, they don't have to answer all the demographic questions. But, um, you know, I'd be generally curious, you know, how many dual income families do we have in this town? You know, how many single parents do we have out there? How many, you know, what's our, you know, age demographic and things like that? Because when, when deciding, you know, changes on the charter and the people, and the collateral consequences of those changes, we understand our body of people a little bit better. Uh, and then I, again, I think, you know, I, I want to be proud of this when we're done. I, I really want all of us to, to say we gave it our best shot. Uh, it, it may sound a little hokey, but I said it to these guys, that, you know, the word sanctuary is kind of a buzzword, but to be honest with you, everybody deserves to have a sanctuary city for their, for themselves and their families. And I believe this charter has a lot to do with, you know, how we posture that, that city, so, so we can market ourselves and say, this is our identity, this is who we are, come grow with us, come live with us. Your neighbors help the neighbors, you know, let's, let's make the charter reflect our values.
Is there a personal, you want to come in, sir?
Yeah, I basically concur with, you know, Mr. Rotoal in regard to our situation as far as the council coming along. Also, I think that if we desire to go into a, I guess the word is a five-member council, we are going to have to be awfully careful on how that is done. Because if you drop one member at each election off, we're going to have a two-year period that we're going to end up with six people, which, if we are to end up in a tie, will cause several problems. I don't know what the idea of, I can understand the economics of going to five, I have no problem with that. I just think that what we do needs to be thoroughly thought out in a very concise plan. But within doing that, it's going to have to be good.
Anything else, sir? Mr. Cobby, you got anything you want to add or questions, sir?
It doesn't matter, it's still going to come back to the law director, city manager, council, then it's going to go before the citizens decide.
Well, I think that's one of the big things I mentioned to you, is, is you touched on it just a little bit, is making sure that once this is done, once it's decided, or what you present to us, and we look it over and it goes forward, that the, the educating, the educating the citizens when it comes time to vote, what they're actually looking at. Because I think, you know, I told it to you, it's, I think it failed the last time, just because I think people see it, charter, you know, the charter, and they get scared, I don't know what this is, I'm either not voting for it at all, or they just vote no, because they fear maybe some sort of taxes in there, or, or new laws that's going to impact their way of living in New Carile. So, you know, that, that'll be a key, key thing as well, it's just, you know, and like you said, whether it's, uh, the, uh, getting things mailed out, or just some in-person things at festivals or farmers market, I think could definitely help with that, so.
If I could address Mr. Cook's concern about dropping to five. On one cycle, we have three council members, on another, we had four, we cut that back to two, then right away, we have five.
You're speaking of the election that would take place two years from now.
Right.
And that, that is the thought. I just want to be sure that when we do this, it is thoroughly thought out, so that we don't open up another can of worms and get ourselves in a problem.
We could also just research some other cities and see what, you know, cities that have done some of the things. There's got to be articles out there on it.
I'm sure.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No.
Miss Angleton? There's no council? No, sir? Sir?
Um, does it really know any other municipal, strictly municipal, like a city that has city name, that has five houses?
I don't know, that, and that's what I was thinking, I don't know if it really, I'm not saying...
I'll have Jake look into that, make sure it's not a horse requirement that, that cities have, so...
It could, yeah, and it could be.
Yeah, and I'll be back to that.
Donwellville has seven.
Do you think it really?
They're not a, they're not a city, but they're, they're a village.
Two hundred people.
Yeah.
They usually have to appoint.
That's a huge percentage of that population.
So we'll look, um, they'll take you five minutes, I'll figure that out.
Are we doing, you know, looking at the, and after talking in our last meeting and then looking at the agenda, I know it says under the regular council meeting, um, interview slash appointments, I mean, is this, can, I mean, this is, are we doing?
I thought we had appointed them.
Well, we accepted it, didn't?
You guys did not interview them.
No, we, no, I know we didn't interview them.
Yeah.
That's part of the charter.
Right. But I'm saying, as far as an actual interview, it's, it's, it says interview under town hall, I mean, we can do that in here since we have a...
Well, we, that's why I called you, Mr. Cook, over the weekend, because you could technically, but you're going to revisit it again in a regular session.
Okay.
So that's why I put it under regular sessions, you guys can interview them, and right after that, go ahead and make the motion to approve. But not, you can interview, you can talk about it if you want, now, interview any official action after done regularly, that's why.
Well, that's all I was going to say was, is I know the three of you fairly well, so I mean, I mean, just from dealing with the three of you, I don't have a whole lot of questions for you, because I mean, I know you all three are, you know, good citizens, long time, you know, been involved with the city, so I mean, I don't have anything to ask you guys. I mean, I, I trust your guys' uh, work ethics and judgments and all the above, so...
Can I ask them a few questions?
You can ask anything you want.
Awesome. I have noted here, you know, you guys' current comp plan, I was talking to Mr. Hall on the phone today, our planning board is, is looking at that already. It is, uh, since twenty twelve was the last time they've looked at it. I am going to email it to you, I wanted to do it before I got here today, but it got, the time got away. I'm also going to email you, for Hall, to talk about the legal opinion. Is there any other documents you guys are going to need, you can pick off the top you have, but I can get to you.
The only thing, I, I sent you that one legal opinion from UC Berkeley, uh, it's for California doing municipal charter reviews. And it's a five-page document that it is essentially just kind of a, like a source document, gives just kind of general consensus of, of what the charter is, what it encompasses, you know, some, yeah. And there's a case law that's applicable to California, but I didn't know, only thing I could find online from the state of Ohio was like sixty-three pages. So it was a monster, source book for charter reviews. I just didn't know if Jake may have access to something that, you know, I don't know.
Like a cheat sheet almost? I mean, what, what exactly is it?
Yeah, it just basically, it gives you just kind of, these are the ORC articles applicable to municipal charter reviews. Um, it kind of outlines some different sources, applies some case law, uh, just, just again, some extra resources for us to, you know, check and verify, you know, with the code, you know, with, with anything that we're doing, you know, just like you're talking about the seven members, well, that's, that'd be, you know, a, something that we would, you know, like to do our own deal diligence, I know we trust our law director, but, uh, just something that has easy access to, to just, you know, the code, I guess.
Okay. Trying to figure out how I'm going to work that thing.
Do you have any source documents for municipal charter reviews? Does, has the state of Ohio or the bar association put out any source documents for charter reviews? Normally, it's some law students, projects, law review. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, awesome.
Okay. So our next, I mean, obviously in the regular meeting, we'll do the official interview, I guess, if you will, I mean, the appointments, if council so chooses to do so, which I don't see why it would be a problem. And then we need to get those other two to three extra members rolling as soon as possible, hopefully at the next meeting, to get things officially moving, and this...
Oh, also Jacob Albo.
Go ahead.
I'm just taking it out loud, Mr. Schreibach, we're going to be, remember?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. We can, we can meet in person, but if we're allowed to have her on a screen somewhere to do her interview.
You know, the more I think about that, as long as you guys are in person, if she's on that screen, that'd be no different than us talking to her like a, than their contractor. But it may be different, too, because it is a board that's going to be working for the city, so we'll just make sure we do it, perhaps, and get Jake's opinion on it.
I'll do that. Yes.
Okay.
Ohio Revival is Code Chapter seventy-one stipulates cities must invest their legislative power in a legislative authority. The authority must be composed of at least seven members.
Really, there it is, so there's your seven. Maybe you should be our city attorney.
Four of them.
Look at that! How quick that was!
With Google, you can get lots of stuff fast.
Everybody's a doctor, attorney, or the best person in the world because of Google.
It also says, four of whom are elected from wards and three of whom are elected by citywide vote.
Well, that's, I mean, and, but if you read into it, the wards are established by the charter.
I was going to say, probably have to put it in there for charter, Mr. Cobby.
Charter is the same, charter is for, for seven, but... And then like, city just went to wards based off of their square mileage.
Okay.
They have four, four, four wards and three at large.
That's what you read? And would our home rule authorities supersede that?
Um, not divided, but I just sent this to you right away. Um, Ohio Revival is Code Section seven of five, dot seven-two, council members, number of members in term, um, says, in short, and summarize it with long, um, not less than five or more than fifteen, um, but then it goes on to say, um... When council is elected at large, the number of councilmen should be in proportion to the population in municipal corporations, as determined by the last proceeding in federal census. I mean, municipal corporation having not more than ten thousand inhabitants, three councilmen, not more than ten thousand, and not more, more than ten thousand and not more than twenty-five thousand to the five, and more than twenty-five thousand, um, to the seven.
So technically, we could go to three, based on part.
If they're elected by, it's a little bit different, it looks like if it's elected by a board, um...
If they're elected by a board, it's no more than ten thousand inhabitants, would be five.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, that's for plot down the road, and we get the official committee put together. Mr. Bridge, you have anything else for these three?
That's why I just called you, so...
Anything else, council? Anything else, Don? Mr. Wright?
Just, uh, the other thing in the charter, uh, it addressed the form of government as council and city manager, and I just wondered, is that a topic of discussion here, I think, not, not that I...
As far as, I mean, as far as, does anybody want to see it changed?
Yeah, if the mechanism for changing that would be within the charter, right?
Correct, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with a city manager, you know, strong former government. I mean, me personally, I just, I mean, it seems like it works.
If anyone wants me to leave the room while you have this discussion? We will.
We're getting a raise.
May not have to worry about it, because we're just so... Well, the, the advantage of a city, a strong city manager, is you have someone who, uh, preferably has a degree, someone who's studied municipal management, if you just have a strong mayor...
Who knows what you'll get?
We might get Mike.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's been that way. Was it ever, was it ever mayor?
It was a mayor back prior to, uh, becoming, well, we, I would think that was a village. Then we were the mayor, and I agree with Dale and you in regard to the standpoint, the professionalism, the amount of money that we're spending, the amount of people, um, I, I don't think we want to go back to a strong mayor, former government. There may be a certain person out there that would fit that capability, but to get that same person in year after year, election after election, I don't think that would be a very valuable situation.
Right. And then also, you hear that, that topic comes up with a city manager, why don't we have a city manager that's from New Carile? You know, I mean, we, we really, and not that there's someone in New Carile that could do the job, but you really narrow yourself down to, um, you know, less options if something was to be a problem with, you know, one or two that you had hired. You know, as far as council being from the city, which is the most definite, you need to, we're the ones that live here, we, we talk to you guys, you guys talk to us, but, you know, the day-to-day operations for the city manager, I don't think it should be locked down to just someone who lives in the city of New Carile, I think that really would narrow down, um, you know, the possibilities of who we could have, so...
Happen to agree with you.
Yeah.
And even with Randy sitting here, I think we have a good guy in the, in the seat, so, I, I like the full government.
But, you know, when Randy was to maybe, you know, get hired for the city of Chicago or something, you're maybe interested, Scott?
But I do think with that, though, um, because I, I, I definitely agree, a strong city manager, former government, is us from New Carile. Uh, but I think when we do get in that chapter and we start talking about his administration or her administration, um, that, that may be something that, that you guys want to discuss a little bit about how your departments work. When we get a comp plan, how does the administration implement the comp plan? Um, do we need to add to, subtract from, you know, that's where I think some discourse of discussion could come in, into play, not necessarily the form of government, just, but maybe the size of the government or the complexity of the government.
And off of that, you know, we talked about Mr. Cook, and, and, I think, and Miss Angleton had been pushing for, let's get a, a, a retreat together to, to get a goal for, you know, five years' hour, or seven, or whatever ends up being decided on. And then we talked, I don't know if you were at that meeting or not, but we discussed that maybe we should hold off on that, because if you guys are putting a charter together, it may have new aspects to it, or that may change some of the angles or considerations that we want to do. So it's, you know, what, you know, like we discussed, what needs to come first? Does the charter need to come first, or does our plan need to come first?
Chicken or the egg?
The plan, you think the plan needs to come before they make their decision?
I thought we had brought off the, the, uh, the tree.
We have, we have. Yeah, we did, we did, but I think it was just casual discussion, do we, I don't, and at this late in the year with a budget coming up and, and CIPs and things like that, you, you really couldn't even, I don't know if you could get one together that quick, to be honest, but, um...
The idea I had, potentially, is could we do them in tandem? I do believe that they, they intersect one another, and I think for us as a committee, uh, it would help us kind of posture where we're going and what we're doing, if we, uh, you know, had an idea of kind of the five-year, ten-year plan. And I believe some of the people that we want to talk to and, you know, interview, or just hear their thoughts on and things like that, I think you could, you need that intelligence for your comp plan.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're kind of just sharing information, whether it's a separate committee that's taking care of that, um, or whoever. I would like to share some of the, you know, to raw intelligence that we've got for the community that I think may help with your retreat, or if it's possible that we could do it in tandem, if the actual, no kidding, let's shut things down retreat, doesn't happen until after the new year. I don't think, you know, we can't collect information leading up to that, so when you get to that final, like, okay, let's sit down and really hash this out, now you've got a ton of resource, a ton of feedback, that you guys can really digest as a, as a, you know, as a council.
No, I agree. Anything else? Mr. Bridge, anything?
Oh, I got like, one, two, three, four, five, just bullet points of, I just want to say it out loud, so I think the council can hear it, and then the charter review commission can hear it, about things that we see, and this is just a tip of iceberg, that I think would have immediate impacts on the council's overall operations. Uh, one, resolutions, they have a fifteen-day waiting period, those should be effective immediately after we pass. Your ordinances are the ones that you should have that waiting period, just when you kind of made it ordered into certain contracts.
of designated, ordered into certain contracts, and the, and the charter already specifically spells out pretty clear what has to be done by ordinance and what doesn't. Your resolutions are, uh, let's change a bank signatory. Well, once that gets approved-
Let's change, what'd you say?
Like, change a bank signatory, would be something that a resolution would-
Okay.
Let's say we have a new finance director, and I have to change, get a resolution there to go be, have permission to change out a new signatory charter, so they can make changes to the camp, I have to wait fourteen days for that resolution to become an impact.
Right.
So it really puts a hinder on city, city ordinance, uh, city business. Most cities, their resolutions do not have a waiting period, as your ordinance is that, so that is something that would be possible if we can get changed.
Okay.
Codification update, um, the last time the charter was approved, it was kind of a while ago, nowadays, everything is online, we are only supposed to do our code like once every four to ten years, that needs to be changed every six months to every year, or immediately after we pass the law, because right now, I can technically wait that five years, well, since most people use our codes online, we'll say council doesn't, we do an amendment to the code that changes something, technically, I don't have to send it anywhere until that period ends, and then the online code doesn't get updated. So anything that, anytime we pass legislation that gets codified, I think that should be in the charter, for that to be done nearly immediately after, within X amount of weeks or days from when it's passed. City manager, it says two years' experience as a city manager, that's, that means we have these five. We are a small city with big city problems, water, wastewater, I mean, we, we got a lot of, a lot of big things going on, and it took me around two, three years to really get in, to fully understand my job, understand the roles, and to that, given New Carolina, let's say if I go, you guys have to look at someone else, you're going to get someone with very little, no experience, someone with five, six years of experience, or, is I going to come here and take the day that you guys can offer? So maybe look at that, just a boot for thought about, it doesn't have to be five, maybe three years' experience, close to that, too. Residency requirements, I know that came up, but you guys might want to look into that because the state of Ohio has now maybe got a legal to require your city managers to live in your residence unless you do specific things, uh, but right now, the charter just says it's up to you guys, so you might want to look at the legality of the current language versus current state law. You can classify this as a safety service position and actually require your manager to live in your residency, but it has to be based off current state law. Right now, how it works is not, is not lined up. Another thing, too, with the city manager is, right now, your charter calls for, let's say I put my resignation in, it calls for a thirty-day notice. When you're in this position, you have this much stuff under your belt, most cities require sixty days, and it's something that I was working on the contract of my employment with you guys, I was recently putting that sixty day in there, going above and beyond of what your charter does, you guys have to look out for yourself at the end of that day, and thirty days is not enough time, so clean up what they're doing, get someone else in, and then make that transition even easier. I guess a lot of cities have that sixty day requirement opposed to thirty. And the last one is, hi, for us on the administration thing, is the, how we have to do our CIP, we have to do that three months before we submit the budget. We don't carry over millions of dollars in a lot of our programs, so we're essentially doing our CIP multiple times a year. We'll do it first, we have charter requirement, put our operational budget in there, realize we didn't have enough funds in there to do a capital, so now we have to amend it again, make the line item match the imbalance, so it presents a lot of challenges with how we do that. Again, if we were in Springfield, or in Dayton, or Beaver Creek, where these fund balances have millions of dollars left over, they're, that's very easy, we're not having some of them, so we literally have to slash our CIP multiple, multiple times a year. And that was just a quick, that's all.
Thank you, sir, those are some good ones.
Yes. CIB stated as a-
Capital improvement plan.
Capital improvement.
That's, uh, we have to do every year, and it's for five years. And maybe we look at that, instead of the five-year period, maybe just three years, you know?
All right. Any other, Ms. Wright, you have anything else? All right. Well, if that's the case.
I would like to thank all of you, because I've spent lots of time in that stuff, and you're great.
All right, well, we are down to executive, there's nothing left, so. First, my Ms. Aleson, second, my Mr. Grimm.
Counselor Lynn, no counsel?
Yes.
Counselor, uh, Cook?
No, Cobb.
Cobb, I'm sorry. Counselor, uh, Vice Mayor Cook? Yeah, Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn Grimm?
Yes.
And Counselor woman, eight?
Yes.